Six o'clock and we'll call meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Basio.
It's a beautiful day today, good day to give thanks. Let's bow our heads. Lord, it's in your name that we come and thank you for the grace that you have bestowed upon us. And Lord, we thank you for a city that we love and a city that I believe loves us. So I ask for your guidance. I pray for our leaders today. This is not an easy day to be a leader, but Lord, they've chosen to serve. And I pray for strength and wisdom and guidance. Bless our whole family, the citizens of Allen Park. Amen.
Thank you. Mike Field, please take the roll.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schlack.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
By Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would request that Resolution One be moved to the consent agenda.
Does the motion maker agree?
Yes.
All right, so we will be moving our one to the consent agenda. We'll just call it C. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 25th, 2023.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. A motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting of May 1.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos. Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion is carried. Now we have a presentation this evening. Pastor Basio is going to introduce us to the newest member of the Chaplain Corps.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, I found myself standing in front of the Allen Park Movie Theater waiting for a ticket when I looked up and realized it was gone. And I believe that our city is changing, but it's changing for the better. And with that, I'd like to introduce to you some of your Allen Park Chaplains. I'm going to ask if they would stand and just join me up here in the front. Reverend Hunt from Grace, Reverend Cruthers, and Reverend Harschenbagger. Reverend Tracy Fressel is also one of our chaplains from Inner City, and he is out of town at this time. Gives me great pleasure to introduce to you a brand-new chaplain to the city of Allen Park. He comes well-qualified, like our chiefs who look for talent in all the other places and other cities. We found someone serving in Detroit and in Monroe and in the regional Chaplain Corps, who is actually local to our community and is actually launching a church in the city of Lincoln Park. New City Church will be coming in September. And a desire to serve is wonderful, but when you find a desire to serve with a seasoned, trained personnel, then that's just fantastic. So I'd like to call up Reverend Stanley Turner and if he would come with his wife, please. Come and stand right here next to me. And I've come to know this wonderful couple and Reverend Turner, and I want to say welcome aboard to the city of Allen Park. He comes well-qualified, and I just appreciate his servant's heart. And Reverend Turner's wife is a BK, and I know you wanted to get a picture of us standing here, so we're going to depend on... I kind of blew that one. She was right mid-shot. But I think we have some friends who are willing to do that. And I'd like to remind you that the Allen Park Chaplains are here for you. No one should feel alone in our city or in any way abandoned. The city has allowed us the opportunity to volunteer and serve, which shows me as a 32-year resident in the city of Allen Park that our city cares for us. And your citizens care. We're here to serve the citizens, the city employees, the fire and police departments. We stand with you, ready to come. We have ministers, reverends, chaplains, pastors. And if you desire a different flavor of ice cream, we can do a referral to other leaders in our community without any problems. We're here to help you wherever you're at. And so at this time, I'd just like to ask Reverend Turner to introduce himself to you so that you can hear from him, and then I'd like to pray for him before we're done.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To Almighty God, who is the reason why we're all here, Mayor McLeod, to Chief Egan and Chief Kane, all the city council, and these chaplains, and to my dear wife. Just like to extend greetings to all of you guys from New City Church, just up Southfield Road in Lincoln Park. We are super, super delighted to be here this evening, and what an opportunity it is to serve a wonderful downriver community. So God bless you. Look forward to serving you guys, looking forward to the opportunity to get to know each of you individually. God bless you.
And someone has asked, how do we reach the chaplains? There is no secret bat cave. You just make a phone call. Well, there might be, I should not say that. But we're not in it. You can reach out to the city or to the police department, and they have our numbers, and we'll be happy to stand with you and encourage you. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Turner and his wife to stand here. And then if you gentlemen wouldn't mind standing behind them. And I'd just like to pray a prayer of dedication. This is, again, growth. It's people coming to our city with a desire to serve you and, of course, to serve the Lord. Father, I pray for this wonderful couple. I thank you, Lord, because no chaplain stands alone. We know, Lord, that a three-stranded cord is not easily broken, and that three-stranded cord is he, she, and him who holds that cord together. So I pray, Father, for blessing upon the ministry of this chaplain and his dear wife, a BK. And Lord, that you would weave him into our city to provide strength, more strength and more support than we've been able to give before. And we give you the praise. Amen. Thank you, everyone.
The Chaplain Corps has been around for quite some time and provide a lot of services that we don't always see. But I know that they've been of tremendous support to our police and fire and many of our residents and have to deal with a lot of things that we ourselves would prefer not to. So we are very fortunate to have them and look forward to adding more individuals to that group. I know that Councilman Lloyd and I have had several meetings with Pastor Basio about trying to expand their group. They go through a very rigorous screening process, and it's left solely up to that organization or their staffing. But we're very appreciative to have them. And we will move on to our organizational business. Next on the agenda is an appointment. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Greg Gunner to the DDA Board of Directors for a term ending December 31st, 2023, filling the vacancy created by the passing of Mr. Strobel. Mr. Lally?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Gunner, would you please come up to be sworn in?
Good evening.
Good evening. Our city clerk is going to swear you in. And I think we have several members of the DDA here, as well as the board of direct... The executive director.
Hello. I'm going to read it. You don't have to repeat after me.
Great.
I'm not going to repeat what you do, Mike. Just at the end, say, "I swear." "I do, I affirm," whatever you feel most comfortable with. "But I ask you to raise your right hand. And do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of Downtown Development Authority member to the best of your abilities, so help you God?"
I do.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you think you can keep?
Okay.
You just sign it when you're done or whenever.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gunner. And we move on to the city administrator's operational report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council of residents of Allen Park. I do got to put a word in for Pastor Basio. I was here for a meeting January 26th of 2015. He offered a prayer for me in the hallway at the old temporary 40-year-old temporary city hall. And two months later, I ended up in Allen Park, March 26th, 2015, to be here. And so Pastor Basio has a couple of connections that are there that we definitely all could use. Just a few updates on some projects going on here in the city of Allen Park. Rosedale Boulevard construction project. Hard rock concrete has removed and replaced the concrete on the west side of Rosedale Boulevard from Southfield to Jonas Avenue. They plan to pour on Wednesday from Jonas Avenue through the Champagne Road intersection. Do apologize, the intersection was closed last week, but this will make the project go in there. They're just going faster than we expected. They will probably be done with that project by the end of... by the end of July. I'm not too sure with all the restoration that, but they'll definitely be done, if not sooner. I kind of anticipated maybe August, September. I'm looking back at the time, maybe around that range. So they are definitely making a great headway. While the concrete is secured, they're going to go back and work on the side street repairs. So any of the side streets of Jonas, Oceana, that we had additional work that was necessary. And typically, that's going to be from the... from Rosedale back about 110 feet, about the back of the first house that's on that, on the Rosedale. They'll be working on that area. Just a reminder, Rosedale Boulevard will be closed at Southfield for the duration of the project. It's not going to open. It's been closed since the beginning, and it will remain closed all the way through the project. Reek Road, water main replacement and reconstruction. That project is scheduled to begin the week of May 22nd. They will start that with the water main, and then we'll proceed into the concrete work after that. Same contractor for the concrete is going to be Hard Rock. The water main is D and D. They're doing it for the water main project. They are subcontractor of Hard Rock Concrete. So if there's any delays with the water main, Hard Rock will be able to deal with his own subcontractor at that point. That was done purposely on that. Paris Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. Reeko Excavating has installed the new water main and water services on Paris Avenue from Allen Road to the dead end just east of Lawrence Avenue. They need to do a tie-in for the last part of that water main, which may require a temporary shutdown of a large residential section near that project area. We're looking at a couple of different options, or I should say, Tom's looking at a couple of different options. But we're trying to avoid shutdowns. The problem that we're running into is some of the gates. Trying to get the coordination to get the right area, get everything shut off. It just becomes a little bit larger as we go on. So he's got a couple of other options he's looking at right now. Paris Avenue, the reconstruction of that road will start May 17th through May 22nd, somewhere in that timeframe, but it's going to be Mario Savon Cement. But they're pretty much done with the water main at this point in time, so he'll be able to start that water main, or start the reconstruction project in about another week and a half or so. Concrete sectioning, that will also be Savon Cement. That'll start after July 1st. The area that he's going to be concentrating on this round is going to be E-course Road between Pelham and Roosevelt. So and I know it's going to be on the east, west side of E-course. There's a lot of areas over in Philamine, Cortland, Belfort, and I believe there's a couple of sections maybe on the east side as well. But that's going to be the concentration area for that portion of the project. He's also... Savon Cement's also doing the utility repairs, and they should be finished with the first round of those repairs by the end of this week and moving on to some other... back to those other projects that we listed. Just want to have DDA Director Ben Hughes. If you can, please let Lauren Belek know, great job she's doing. Lauren Belek, Farmer's Market. 28 vendors this past week, 600-plus customers. And the numbers that they were getting back for was anywhere from $1,850 for a vendor down to $110. So definitely, the weather got warm, and it was much better from the rain that was the previous week. But definitely a great turnout. I think she's doing a fantastic job of bringing those vendors in. And as we get those numbers and the word gets out to the other vendors, we're going to see more vendors want to be here. So please tell her, thank you, great job on that. And then just finally, I have an extremely, extremely understanding wife, who's my 25th wedding anniversary tonight. I'm here. Exactly. But I'm here. She's been extremely understanding of the career that we have and what comes along with that. So I just want to wish her a happy anniversary. She was a mere... I don't even know what she... she had to be 18 at that time. I'm pretty sure she was only 18 when we got married. But happy anniversary to my wife. And as soon as we get out of here, I'm going to... I'm getting dinner at home, so.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Taking Culvers home?
I maybe taking a pizza.
We have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report. Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions other than happy anniversary?
Happy anniversary.
There's no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments. You have four minutes to speak. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your full address. And other than that, we just ask that you be civil.
Dennis Hayes, Quanta Avenue. I don't know that I've ever heard a more self-serving representation than that I just heard about the Farmer's Market. We have a situation here where we have a program that's been devised, it seems, from all my research, solely by Mr. Kibbe. I heard a lot of representations by Mr. Schlack over Facebook and elsewhere that the Economic Development Committee was very active in this process. And yet, in my research today, I went through the meetings. I can only find one meeting back in February 17th of '22 that they met. I don't know what they met about. I couldn't find any minutes or anything like that. I did a FOIA request. I asked for minutes, documents, any kind of information from the economic development. I got zero. So that argues either you've withheld information or you don't have any information. Now, I'll err on the side of saying you don't have information, that you didn't blatantly lie to me. I asked for financial information. I got all the utility bills representing some $20,000 worth of expenses we had on that building while it remained empty and while we neglected it, allowing it to become moldy because we turned off the gas, we had shut-off noises, notices, and every other thing. And I've talked to the demolition people, who I see most mornings at the restaurant, and I asked them, how bad was the mold? They said, it really wasn't that bad. It could have been easily remediated. So the point of the matter is, I believe, and I believe this fully, either Schlack or Kibbe or both determined what they were going to do with this project, went ahead with it, plowed ahead, submitted a grant before it was voted on, which I think is probably illegal, and just plowed on forward. And now to have the self-serving advertiser, my God, the Farmer's Market's going gangbusters suddenly after years of 20, 30 people and probably hundreds of dollars. Now suddenly, we have thousands of dollars and hundreds and hundreds of people showing up. That just sounds all too convenient to me, frankly. And I'm very concerned about this process. As I announced before, I sent you all a very lengthy list of concerns. I only heard back from Matt. The rest of you didn't respond. And that tells me you don't want to respond. Mark's not going to respond because he's the guy pushing this thing through. The other thing I learned today is that you have said in your grant application that the DDA is popping for $3 million of this project. I don't know that they know that. I haven't seen it in any of their minutes. I've heard anecdotally from some of the people that are in that organization that they weren't aware of it. So if we're committing monies of people we don't even have authority over, I mean, they ought to be able to run their own shop. Now, maybe they did. I don't know that they did. I can't say that they didn't. But if they didn't, that's a further indication that this thing is a total cluster. If you know the final word, you can add it yourself. So I'm very disturbed. I'm very concerned about this whole process. I think the citizens are. I met a guy today in the barber shop. He said, I said, what do you think of the movie theater thing? He's, oh, they're going to have a dog park there. That's how well you communicate. Nobody knows what the hell's going on, frankly. And you have a duty to publicize and inform the public. If you're not going to do it in your meetings, in your minutes, in these public sessions, you don't show up with a proposal. I asked for the cost of that proposal. I got a bid. I didn't get the cost. The bid was for some $4,000 or $5,000 to come up with that dog and pony show you had here. When was that entered into? Did you, any of you know about that? I don't think so. I don't think any of you knew about this project, but you felt it was too late, so you voted yes, and the thing went forward. This is a travesty. And I hope that this grant will not be approved because I think until and unless the citizens have an active voice in what happens with scarce city dollars, nothing should go forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Lenita Martin, Outer Drive. I've been to a previous city council meeting where I was able to make some great partnerships. We were able to partner with the Allen Park Police Department and give out over 100 book bags. And we were able to also partner with the Allen Park High School to adopt 20 families for Christmas. So thank you. What I'm here today about is my concern about not having any options when it comes to DTE. I was one of the households that lost power for over 196 hours. And I tried very amicably to talk to DT and say, this $25 reliability credit will not cut it when I have over $1,500 worth of losses and a loss of a family pet. So because I knew how far I would go with DT, I did contact the Michigan Public Service Commission, and they did an investigation. And of course, they gave me a PR answer of, oh, it was the historic ice storm, but I have my neighbor here who can tell you, we lose power on Outer Drive on a sunny day with no ice. So I know in other counties, in other places like Ann Arbor, they are currently taking over their utilities as a city municipality. And I would really like to ask if some consideration can be given for that, maybe for Allen Park in the future, just because I just personally feel DT doesn't have a competitor, so there's no need for them to improve. There's no need for them to be held accountable. They're not being held accountable. You know, I'm just going to assume because they do a lot of election campaigning and giving funds to different individuals, they're not really being held accountable. But in the 21st century, to lose power for 196 hours in the winter, as if winter is not something that happens every year in Michigan, is unacceptable. So I'm very interested in seeing if there is something we can do as citizens to look at alternatives because not having an alternative is very detrimental at this point. And I'm sure my neighbor could speak to more statistics because he has more information about what's happening in Ann Arbor. But that's something I'm really very passionate about. So I just wanted to thank you guys for providing us a forum to share our concerns, and I hope we can find something different to do in the future because DTE is just very frustrating at this point. Thank you.
Good evening. Roger Zalinski from Outer Drive. Following up on the conversation that Lenita had, I find it difficult that DTE is going to change the spots on that cat. It's been a very successful corporation for a long period of time, based on profit. There are a couple of local communities that have taken the profit motive out and made the utilities public utilities. Lansing has done this. Wyandotte has done this. The same storm hit them as hit us. And they had perhaps a handful of customers affected. Power was restored to everyone within a day or two. I have a summary here of information. If you guys are interested in taking a look at it, I can hand out some copies. I would be interested in following up on that alternative of switching the utility to a municipal utility instead of a corporate utility. And so that's a proposal I have. The other is that there is a... There's funding available to encourage local governments to use solar power locally. There's a group called SoulSmart.org. There are municipalities that are signing up across the nation for their program. It's free of charge. It's to encourage the local citizens to install and effectively use solar power. Does anyone know if Allen Park has signed up for that, for SoulSmart? Okay, Grand Rapids, Lansing, and Ann Arbor have done that. And I can leave these copies with you guys. I didn't print enough. But I'll give these to Mike.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. If that does come to pass, if that solar presentation is implemented, I'm very interested in participating. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Kettlehut. I live on Cortland. And I think they're going to repair my road. Did I hear this this year? That'd be great. Couple of points I wanted to drive here today. I would really love to see if we could set up a Citizens Commission to study the development of the property downtown. I will volunteer to be on that committee. I've served on many committees, the Angle Parking, the Allen Park School District, evaluating their buildings, so planning and zoning. So I would love to be on that committee. So let's do that. I hate Facebook, but it's the best tool to find out what's going on out on the street. And this has really kind of taken off. I don't know if you follow it or read the posts and everything, but man, they've been getting hit a lot. And it's not all great. So there's a couple of issues. Do we want to make something that will be a cost? Or do we want something that will be a plus? Because those are the real issues. Dog park, auditorium, but cost, okay? Or are we going to make some money off of that? And boy, in these times, that's really, really huge. I got one more thing today, and I cleared this with the mayor. I have my tickets. I get to be on the Allen Park Citizens Civic Fund. And what we do is we raise money for all of the cool projects in Allen Park. They did the roof on the Civic Center, for instance. They got a grant for that. They do the parks. They've redone quite a few parks and put that mulch down. And they're just getting the little extras that's hard to pull out of our budget, you know? So I'm asking anybody that's interested, I have tickets for an event that is so cool next month. Free pizza... well, $30 if you get them before the event, but they're giving pizza. All the cool pizzerias in Allen Park, and you know we got the best pizza around. And, you know, we'll have a DJ there. And it's going to be... it's a cool event, but the whole point is we need to raise money for... to spend money. It's a nonprofit. So if you wanted a ticket or you know anybody, give me a buzz, or I'll give you my card, or give me cash. And that's all I got today. That was pretty nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Len.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Robert Bencher, and I live at 14831 Angelique, Allen Park, Michigan. I've lived there 72 years. I'm having a tree problem. My problem is that the trees behind my house have been destroying my property for 12 years. I've tried to get DT Energy to do something. I've tried to get homeowners to do something. I've tried to get the city of Allen Park to do something. They all come down there and they all blame the other two people. The city claims it's all DT Energy and the homeowner's problem. DT Energy says it's the city and the homeowner. They all blame it on the other guy, and nobody does nothing. I've got, reached the point now that I'm getting old. I want to get my home ready for sale for my children when I'm gone. I've contracted out approximately $12,000 of work to redo what the tree damage has done to my home. I don't care who pays for it. I want to pay for it. I want to get it done, but nobody will let me do it. I've gone to the, two different departments in the city of Allen Park. I go to the tree service. They come out, they tell me the tree is healthy. There's nothing wrong with it. They leave. Couple of weeks later, the limb falls, destroys part of the roof on my home. I know how old those trees are. They can see how healthy the trees are. I planted the trees. I moved there and when I was 22 years old. I'm 93 now. I planted the trees. Those tree lives, those trees have a tree life. They are 65 years old. And when they do remove the trees, I can see the hollow spots in the trees. Now I know why the trees fall on my home. Nobody will do nothing. What I do not want to do now, I'm at the point now, the insurance company is canceling out coverage. They don't want to cover parts. They won't cover the shed in my backyard. The city says that's not back there. My shed has been destroyed seven times in the last 12 years. The last time it was destroyed, the city was back cutting the trees. They dropped a limb right through the roof of my shed, right to the concrete. They stopped. I ran out and I asked them, please don't quit cutting the tree. They ignored me. They shut their machinery off. They went, pulled the log out of my shed, shoved the roof back up. They packed up and they left. That tree is still standing there. Nobody will remove it. The first tree 12 years ago that started all this trouble, I had removed, cost me $1,800. For the next seven, six years, I kept track what I think the cost was. I quit, I quit counting six years ago because I could get nobody to do anything. I quit counting at $465,000. DT Energy and the city of Allen Park has spent on the trees in that area. 465,000. There's only nine trees. I had the biggest and largest one removed for 1,800. Now, I work for General Motors. If this went on in our plant anywhere, they would fire everybody involved. If this is going on all over the place in Allen Park, somebody's paying this bill. And I think it's, I think it's dumb management. My problem now, as I say, is I want to get my home ready for sale. I want to update it, fix it up. I have a shed sitting in my side drive waiting to put up. The problem is I have three trees on the lot. Two on the easement in front of the house, one in the back.
I'm sorry, sir. Sir. Could we get your address? Your time is up.
Okay, can I make one comment?
Sorry.
Between DTE, the city of Allen Park, and a private contractor?
Can we just simply get your address right now? And I will, I will make this statement so it's clear to everyone that trees on a residence property, the city does not touch those trees. The only trees the city touches are on the easements.
But that is an easement.
1-8-4-5.
You pick and choose what easement you.
But please, please give your.
Okay.
1-8-5-4-3.
14831 Angelique. But the one and one that he didn't hit on, a private contractor, won't we? Okay.
I missed it. That's true.
We have the councilman coming up.
I missed it.
Matt Tracer. I live on White Avenue. Haven't been to one of these in quite some time. Haven't really felt welcome since the last time I did try to come to one of these. They arrested me walking in. So I was over at ACO looking for some sunflower seeds and some fertilizer. They didn't have them. So I come over here, see what's new, see how things are progressing and getting better. They're not. I see the same problems with this council that were going on when I had to take them to federal court twice. And you haven't learned anything. This guy that you just cut off at four minutes? Now, I studied parliamentary procedure at Wayne State, so I don't know how many of you others have. But a simple motion to suspend, you could let that guy talk as long as he wants. This guy's been paying his bill for 70 years. And you're so busy, you got to cut him off in four minutes? Shameful. Just like when the last mayor cut off the Purple Heart decorated Korean veteran at four minutes. Shameful. These people have deserved the right to speak. Now, on the electricity, I know a little bit about electricity. It's how I made my living. Quite honestly, the thought of you people being in charge of the electricity, the first thing I think of is Texas. They're in charge of their electricity. Where the windmills don't go because it's cold. But they seem to go fine in Minnesota all winter long. But Texas decided, you know, we'll go cheap. And then they blame the windmills because they haven't got a clue. They're not electrical engineers. They don't know how the grid works. Now, I have breakfast many mornings at the little grill next to where the theater used to be. I'm not surprised at all at all the commotion about what's going to happen. But that's really the second failure. The first failure is that you could not find somebody to develop that building. They found a developer for the Lincoln Park show, and they must have spent an just incredible amount of money just to get the sticky off the floor in there. But, yeah, four minutes. Thank you.
My name's Michael Bencher, and I'm trying to assist my dad in fixing the house up. And that house has been hit by a tree. The problem I'm having, I talked to the city of Allen Park. It's on the easement. City of Allen Park says they only take care of front easement, not back easement. So I guess you pick and choose. I'm not sure. They don't give me an explanation. I went down, I was here in this building. I caught, talked to the coordinates. You're, what's that guy that gave you the ticket? In the spring, we got a ticket because our shed isn't the best looking shed. You already heard why. So we're replacing the shed. The problem is, they don't, you don't, the city of Allen Park don't want to move the tree. DTE don't want to move the tree. A private contractor will not move the tree because it's too close to the wires. Nobody will take the responsibility. My question to you is, where do I turn? And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tina Brigatti on Leslie. I just have a quick question. I was unable to attend the work session. So what was resolution number five, which I think may be number four now? If you could just please have some discussion as to what's going on with that event before you vote on it and share with the citizens, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Just for clarification, is that the state of Michigan beer and wine permit?
No, it's number five currently.
Okay.
And I don't know if it got moved up to number four because you moved one to.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
There's no one else coming forward. We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, finance actions, and requests for the municipal complex committee to hold a meeting with regard to projects for the Allen Park Library. May I have a motion?
Motion.
By Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. And we move on to our resolutions. And we will start with the original resolution two, which is to approve the IGA between Wayne County and the city of Allen Park for improvements to Community Park. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. Fulton will tell us about this agreement.
Good evening. So the intergovernmental agreement for Wayne, with Wayne County for Community Park is $15,000 to be used in the '22, '23 fiscal year. It's the project we put together on the proposal back to Wayne County. Once you do sign the IGA, will be for Community Park. Many locals will know it as Gehona. It's just for the baseball diamond and the dugouts to be reconstructed, leveled. And basically, it's because it's got such a heavy use that we're in, in a situation where we can't control a lot of the weeds again. So with this money, we'd be able to redo community. And there's probably, on average, Kyle books all of our games through APAC with that. And I would have to say, we average probably 100 games on that field for kids probably 10 and under through now until probably early or late June, early July. So I, I think it's imperative, and it's a good use of the money for Community slash Gehona Park for that, to be, to be signed and agreed upon.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Resolution number three. Ratify the action of the city administrator regarding the emergency purchase of 82 GT impact safety tiles from Game Time Sinclair Recreation at a cost not to exceed $14,760. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lally. Elaborate on it.
For this project here, we ended up 82 tiles short from finishing up about 328 square feet. Somehow, we were using leftover tiles from the Humpty Dumpty project, the Kennedy Park project, and the Briar Rabbit project. Miscalculation on what we had in storage. The size of the pad may have changed. And I also believe that they utilized some of the tiles that were supposed to be full squares or partial squares to go around some of the other equipment, which would have reduced our total number. Nevertheless, we still needed to finish the project, and they were still nearby to, to do that. So we ordered the, authorized Rob to go ahead and order those tiles, have them delivered, and we were able to get them back and install it. Actually, the project was finished yesterday with the installation. The contractor was, the installation contractor was still in the area, so we already had him finish that up for us. So I'm just looking for ratification of that action.
Any questions or comments?
To the mayor.
Mr. Lloyd.
So just to be clear, the contractor is, is not local, correct?
Correct.
So if, if this was to stop, wait for approval, this guy's back in Georgia, and now we're paying for him to come back up here?
Yeah, he's, he's out of Georgia.
Okay.
He's a, he's a subcontractor for Game Time Sinclair. So they're a local vendor out of Grand Rapids area, but he's the installer side of Georgia.
And, and to be clear, this is our, now our third park with safety tiles? Is that correct, Mr. Fulton?
Correct. Fourth, fourth. We are fourth completed.
Fourth completed park with safety tiles?
Correct.
And, and as you have made the point many times up here before, these aren't your, this isn't like the wood chips that I played on as a little kid. This is high tech, making sure that our kids are safe on the playgrounds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Just to add to that, councilman?
So that being, they're about almost four inches in depth. And I know that in your, you have history of wrestling. You can almost double up a wrestling mat, and that's how thick these safety tiles are. It's well worth the money just from a perspective of safety, liability. There's fall factors that go into that also. And the other thing in regards to the fourth park being done with these safety tiles is, it puts us now, since 2014, we have four remaining parks to be completed. So we're, we're not sitting back waiting for things to happen. We want to be proactive and not complacent and add to each of the parks whenever we can with the safety tiles for sure, much like we just added on at Kennedy Park. So, and in perspective too, by having the additional tiles from the other projects, we put 40% of those in a, excuse me, gingerbread to a savings of about $23,000. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
And then that, of that 23,000, two of those projects were done with grant money from Wayne County.
Right.
So at no cost to the city. And I believe the Briar Rabbit was also done with county grant money as well.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution three or four. To approve the city clerk's request to apply to the state of Michigan for beer and wine permits for the following events. The Allen Park Street Fair, a Taste of Down River, and Made in Michigan Festival. May I have a motion?
Motion, mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valerius. Comments or questions? I think these are pretty standard. We've been doing these annually. Go through the clerk's office. Correct?
Correct. It's actually my name on the license, the city clerk. So traditionally, the commissions all ask us, and then we, I'll do it separately through the DDA or through the Street Fair. But again, the application now allows us to list multiple dates. DDA did send in their requests, and I'm like, I'm going to add Street Fair, and I'm just going to go get them. So eventually, these would have came down, came to you individually. So that's really it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is passed. Resolution five. To approve the outdoor event application, number 012023, received from Milad Ashaka for a promotional event to be held on Sunday, May 21, from noon to 4:00 PM at 6660 Allen Road, pending final approval from the police chief. And that location is the Top Shelf Liquor Store. May I have a motion?
Motion, mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
I'll second, but I want, I want something about what's going on too.
Seconded by Mr. Lally. Comments, questions?
Please.
So, in the prior, uh, previously, uh, Top Shelf has hosted, uh, a couple of different, uh, alcohol-related signings, so, um, they sell so much of a certain beverage or something like that, they, they can attract a, um, a person to come in. Those, uh, celebrities are usually sponsored by, uh, one of the beverages, um, I don't drink out, I drink beer, I'm sorry. So maybe it's a Tito's or something like that.
Charles Woodson whiskey.
So Charles Woodson was in with his whiskey. Um, and then at Belfour, who has a, is he have a wine? Was Belfour a wine?
Whiskey.
A whiskey as well. Whiskey must be popular, I guess. So as they, as they, uh, are able to draw these, uh, celebrities in, you know, we, we started, this is the third one, and said, okay, wait a timeout. Uh, chief had, uh, received a, uh, a flyer when he was making a purchase at, at the, uh, sister store. And that kind of raised a, uh, red flag to him. I know Ben had the same concern. And, uh, so we said, go back to him, let's have him fill out an application and he can, and he's apply for this, uh, permit and go from that part. He has future, uh, desires to have other, um, and other celebrities come in. And we just, you know, it's first time, okay, second time, we gotta, we gotta get a handle on this. So we make sure, um, we're prepared for it and, uh, with staffing. Uh, he has agreed to, uh, two police, uh, police cars and four police officers for four hours. Uh, because we do anticipate a larger crowd there, of anywhere from, I believe, uh, four hundred to eight hundred people, maybe up to a thousand people.
To the chair.
Yes.
Just to be clear, um, Mr., um, Mr. Ashaka, uh, the Top Shelf is going to be paying for the police hours all the time that goes into that. They will be...
Yeah, that's part of the re- would be part of the requirement.
And so this is, this is something that, um, we are proactively kind of reaching out to make sure that as they're holding this event, we are making sure that it's safe and organized.
Yeah, with the, with the staffing there, uh, Chief Egan was able to, uh, talk to the owner and explain that this is very similar to what we do with, uh, Cabrini. Um, for the Cabrini Fest, they are responsible for, uh, a couple of officers. Uh, we do the same thing with the, uh, the street fair. We do the same thing with Made in Michigan, we did the same thing with the DDA, um, uh, Music in the Street. Some of the occasions that, uh, events that we thought were gonna be a little bit more popular, there's a couple bands that were a little bit more popular that we knew would draw bigger crowds and we wanted to be, um, proactive on that.
Well, and, and through the chair, to be fair, it is a little different than Cabrini because that's in outdoor music because they have rides and everything. They do the outdoor events internally usually. Like, um, Roush will have a luncheon for their employees and family. They used to bring in a food truck in their parking lot. And it'd never go any further, but this is just, like you said, to be cautious. And once you start involving police costs, we, they have to come to you then.
To the chair. What, the other events that he held with, uh, Charles Woodson and was it Belfour?
Eddie Belfour.
What, what kind of attendance did they have?
I wasn't at the, uh, Woodson one, um, for family reasons and he's not a big Chicago black fox.
Well attended? Packed? As, as my understanding that the Charles Woodson event was, was well attended. I didn't go either, but I, I, from my understanding, they had a line out the door for him to sign the bottles of whiskey, obviously. Local boy.
When packed, what does that, I just don't know what that means.
What's that?
What does packed mean?
I don't know. I wasn't physically there.
Because we're talking about four hundred, six hundred, eight hundred people, a thousand possibly, it's, it's a fairly large event.
Yes, it is.
Through the chair, mayor.
Yeah.
It's, they're four hour events, uh, people get there ahead of time, they wait outside. It was non-stop, the whole four hours, um, for Charles Woodson Go Blue. Um, I wasn't there for the, uh, uh, Eddie Belfour for goalie, um, but that was well received too, as I know. But with talking to Mr. Ashaka, um, he showed me a video of the last time this rapper E40 signed, he brought Eminem with him. Granted, it was in California, like four thousand people. I don't expect that for this one. Um, but we did make it abundantly clear moving forward, he, he just can't do these events without coming to the city first and preparing. And some of the big names he's talking about bringing in would be fabulous. Um, we gotta prepare and be safe and, um, make sure, um, the flow for the rec center is okay and things like that. So he has been very receptive after we spoke to him. Um, but yeah, I, I think this is gonna, it's the nature now with celebrities wanting to put their names on products. And if you purchase so much, they'll fly in for an hour, the company will fly in. Um, this particular, um, celebrity, it's six or seven different, um, companies that he's signed his name to with wine and whiskey and liquor or, um, different things. Br- brandy, that kind of stuff, so. Uh, but he is, uh, working with us as far as, um, how many officers we need and how we're gonna, um, handle it. He, there is one change from the, um, sketch as we've, after speaking to him, after I heard some of the music. Um, I think he's gonna move the DJ inside to be a little less, um, offensive for some people maybe going into the rec center or, or shopping or something like that. So he has been a little more accommodating after a conversation or two.
Anyone have any questions or want to ask Chief Egan?
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guess my, my concern is just the amount of people that may show up. This guy's not unfamiliar. He's been around for twenty-five years, producer, musician, actor, and he's been around, quite famous.
The, um, is there anything on that date happening at the community center or that would affect, like, I don't know if there's...
It's Sunday the twenty-first from twelve to four. I don't know, Rob, if you have, but...
At this point, we, we've waited for your decision tonight in order of whether or not we host more events at the community center on that Sunday. Because partly it would become an issue. And at the same thing, at the same token, we want to make sure that the public isn't maybe interfering either side, whether it's interfering with the events or interfering with the community center. So we're kind of on hold.
Mayor, if I could, just for the people that are home, uh, what, what, um, we got from Mr. Fulton was is that they're waiting for our decision in order for them to be able to decide if they're gonna have any events. And if they, we decide to move forward with it, then they would probably put anything on hold, um, so that we can make sure that there's no conflict for parking or anything like that, just for the people that are watching at home.
Yeah, we have it mapped out where they'll be on the sidewalk and, uh, obviously parking's gonna be an issue. As Mr. Hughes talked about, allowing them to put up the porta potty so they're not using the rec center bathrooms and things like that. So um, I know he's already spent, he said over twelve thousand on advertising. I think more importantly is moving forward of the process and him knowing what he needs to go through to the city before he just does this.
Any other questions?
Can I just make a comment, mayor?
Yes.
Um, so I, I, I think that, obviously, I, I, I feel and I understand the apprehension that we have up here. Just where I stand on this, um, I, one, I'm gonna Google E40 as soon as I get off of this dais. Um, just to double check. I know, maybe I should know, but I, I don't off the top of my head. Um, maybe I shouldn't admit that. But, um, what this ultimately comes down to for me is, is that, um, this seems like the best of both worlds in that we're able to support a local business um, in, in bringing people into the city. And what we're ultimately doing is entrusting that, that event is safe for the people that attend it and for the citizens to Chief Egan, who I have absolute faith in. Um, I want to point out to anybody that this resolution says, um, pending final approval from the police chief. So what we're basically doing is, is if we approve this, we are taking it and we are putting it in the very capable professional hands of Chief Egan um, to make a decision about what is safe for the people that attend it and for the citizens of Allen Park. Um, and I have absolute confidence in his ability to do so.
Any other comments? Well put, thank you. Um, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Egan, it's in your court.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Resolution six, to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Allen Park and the Allen Park Police Officers Association effective until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. All, may I have a motion?
Motion, mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Support.
Support by Mr. Schleck.
September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-six, we need to make correction on that. This will be effective until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
September thirtieth.
Yes, I apologize. I just looked for an end date and noticed it as the first sentence, so I wrote it. I, it won't be in the official minutes.
The current collective bargaining agreement with APPOA expires June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Um, they now have a rerepresented by Michigan Association of Police, um, so this will have to be brought into that contract as we go forward as well.
Well, and that's why I just thought any, I, yeah, the union name even might not, yeah, so. It will be reflected properly in the minutes, mayor.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so this is really important to us, um, trying to recruit and retain officers and trying to get the highest caliber we have. Uh, working with Congresswoman Dingell, two, three years ago, we, we brought up how we're in desperate need of officers and try to attract good quality candidates. Uh, most of the cities around us have been, the old word was sponsoring, now it's called in-service training. So the state of Michigan now has issued grants that we qualify for to actually put people through the police academy. Um, so the training costs go right to the academy and they've, we recoup a little bit of the salary. Um, so we had the, we haven't done this in well over twenty-two, three, four years. Um, we have language in the contracts already for recruit, but what this would do is, um, get on the same page with the union that our intentions are to hire these people in and, and, um, make sure everybody understands their seniority date and probation date. And if they, for some reason they can't finish the academy, um, we have the ability to sever that and send them again next time or things like that. But the vast majority of this now is being covered by the state. They just changed a lot of these laws. So, um, it's about twenty-four thousand dollars that can be used for these. Um, it's gonna be a challenge to try and get somebody in this July's academy. That's absolutely what we're gonna do. If you approve this tonight, actually they have oral boards for an interview for a candidate Friday, so we're obviously not waiting. Um, because we have to hire them like a regular employee. Um, oral boards, background investigation, psych, medical test. Um, and then they have to get through the academy, then our field training program. So if we're lucky enough to hire this, this individual, it's, you know, six months down the road before and on the road like Officer McIsaac in Cowan is right now, so.
Very similar to the agreement that we put together with the, uh, department.
Correct.
Through the chair. Uh, currently how many openings do we have right now?
Currently we have five openings and I have three people planning on retiring in the next, um, six months and maybe another three within the next year. Um, we haven't had any applicants in the last three academy classes and we've, we're lucky enough to get those seven, um, laterals in. Um, but the last two hires we had were Officer Friz and Rogers, our local Allen Park kids. So, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're in desperate need of it right now. So, um, this is very important for us to get, to be able to be competitive and get people in. We're still not gonna lower our standards, but I'll be honest, um, this is an opportunity for someone who might want to sit, switch careers and can, doesn't have to take the, the risk of quitting a job and not being able to work and support your family while you do it. So there's an opportunity there if you want to get in law enforcement, now's definitely the time to do it. So, um...
Chief, I think you said before, uh, the last academy, there was fifty-five candidates and there were forty-four of them I...
Yeah, it was like six people didn't have jobs and some of them, there's reasons why they shouldn't have jobs. We probably would have passed on them, but, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. And, um, it's still not a gimme because, yeah, I wouldn't mind being a cop if they want to pay for it. We still want to make sure we're getting the, the right, uh, quality of, uh, candidates in and, and get them through the training so they're not, they're still going through the whole process, but, yeah. It's slim pickings out there.
Yes, unfortunately it has been for a number of years.
Yeah. It is everywhere. It's not just our city, it is everywhere, across the country.
Through the, through the mayor.
Yes.
I gotta ask Chief Egan, through all this process we do to get these guys in to work for us, we send them to the training and everything, can we do something where they can stay here for at least three, four years? Instead of coming in, give them all the goodies, tell them how to do it, give them the guns and all that, and then they stay here for about a half, six months, one year, and they leave?
I think like anything else, we gotta be competitive and ma- and make them want to stay.
Is there something that we can do about that?
You, well, when I, I started off in Detroit and you had to sign a piece of paper saying you have to stay there three years and it wasn't worth the paper it's written on. However, um, the legislation right now is putting through legislation that says if a city puts you through a police academy, I can't make you stay here, but if you leave, you gotta repay those costs. And I'm pretty sure that's gonna pass. Um, a local community close to here went to Detroit, Detroit Police Academy's graduation and took a picture with a brand-new recruit from Detroit in his Detroit uniform and said, welcome to our new officer. And then he walked over and says, I quit and left. So I don't blame the city of Detroit, who's been bleeding for a very long time. Um, but let's be honest, there's cities out there that'll be glad for me to do the work to get a good quality person in here and pay that thirty, forty thousand dollars to have them start. So it's not the solution, but it definitely will help us be competitive and, and, uh, open some doors to get some people in here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution seven, to grant the special regulated use permit for a medical clinic with pharmacy drive-through at nineteen thousand one hundred Goddard Road. Conditional on meeting all of the planning commission recommendations and pending final approval from the building department. May I have a motion? By Mr. Lally.
Support.
Support by Mr. Blevins. Comments or questions?
I may through the chair. Nineteen one hundred Goddard is the old PNC bank at the, uh, on the, on Goddard, uh, just east of, uh, Allen Road. Right behind the gas station and, uh, right behind the, uh, McDonald's and Martinson's and Feuerholm. There was a question earlier about the, uh, access road, uh, that is to the east of the property. That is owned by Martinson's and Feuerholm. I believe that goes all the way behind the McDonald's to their property, um, kind of like a, creates like a fly property. But I believe that they have already, uh, on their site plan acknowledged that they will not be using that, uh, that's not their planned use. They'll be containing all their, uh, circulation on their property without that entrance on. Being honest, I think people are starting to use that entrance once in a while.
We'll follow.
Maybe once. I know the property, it is, it's, you know, the bank's had it for years.
Right.
It's never been a problem, though.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now we come to other business, and tonight we are going to have the first and second reading of a proposed ordinance. May I ask for a motion for the first and second reading?
Motion. Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Uh, any discussion or, uh, questions on this ordinance before we have it read?
Uh, to the chair?
Yes.
Uh, this came to legal affairs, uh, with Councilman Schleck and Councilman Valerius and myself. Um, so what this is gonna do is, is it's changing the hours that garbage pickup, so not parking on the streets is going from eight to four to seven to five. So there's two reasons that we are doing that. Um, one, the contract that we have, um, with GFL says that they can start at seven o'clock. And as it is right now, starting at eight o'clock, and some of you may or may not know this, is that they are struggling to get done, um, by a reasonable time. Um, given the, um, the fact that they have shortages in workers that is going on across the country, um, they are struggling to be able to do so within, within the time that's allotted to them. So this is just gonna give them that ability to make sure that they're picking up that garbage and getting it done so that everybody in the city of Allen Park can get serviced and we're not leaving those garbage cans on the side of the street. I, I understand the reservations, I, I do. Um, I, I myself, my wife and I, like, um, I'm, I'm out by six-thirty, but I'm usually home by three. And so it does definitely cause an inconvenience, but this is, um, this is making sure, like, one of the things that you need to do as a city is making sure that garbage gets picked up. And I've had those, I've had those phone calls to me over at Burt where they haven't, on Burt Avenue, where they haven't picked them up on that particular day. Um, in addition to that, this al- also allows our, um, street sweepers, they usually are reporting by, I believe, s- s- seven AM. So they're reporting at seven AM, so they report, they get their orders, so this allows them to be on the road by seven-thirty and making sure that our roads are clean and clear. Um, I know it's an, it's an inconvenience. Um, but I think that this is ultimately, um, beneficial and makes sure that our city is safe and clean.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Matt, uh, Mr. Colbert, will you do the first? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Good evening. Sir, when there's questions, it's, it's up here.
Okay, and so specifically about the comment about the change in the hours, how do I go about it?
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, so we don't do that. There, there's a certain protocol in meetings, but after the meeting, I'll be happy to talk to you, sir.
Great.
Thank you.
First reading by title only of proposed ordinance oh-three dash two zero two-three, in ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending chapter thirty-eight, solid waste, Article Two, collection and disposal, Division One, generally by the repeal and readoption of section thirty-eight dash thirty-three, parking prohibition on collection day to update the section. Second reading of proposed ordinance oh-three dash two zero two-three, in ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending chapter thirty-eight, solid waste, Article Two, collection and disposal, Division One, generally by the repeal and readoption of section thirty-eight dash thirty-three, parking prohibition on collection day to update the section. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city clerk will...
Well, and sir, rest assured, they're, they're not passing the ordinance tonight. You will have an opportunity prior to them passing it. They would love to have you come up, 'cause no one ever comes up, but that will happen, because now my office has to publish it and allow time for it to be read and reviewed. It'll come back in one month for the third and final reading, and there'll be a public hearing that, so.
I will be in touch, that's fine.
Yeah, or you can, again, email them in between, so they have it before they vote. That's the beauty of, you know?
Okay.
Anytime.
Absolutely.
I'll talk with you.
So.
Or we can talk after the meeting. We'll do both. I just want to let you know this isn't the final, say, God.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. We will move on to council comments on this evening. We will start with Councilman Valerius.
Keep it brief. I just wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. On a more personal note, if you don't know already, I'm a teacher in Woodhaven Brownstown School District. I just wanted to, to express my thoughts and prayers to my students, fellow teachers, faculty, staff of that district. Today, we are putting a shelter in place lockdown based on a video that surfaced of threats being made against students, teachers, and even police at my school, Woodhaven High, so. These incidences are becoming the norm, unfortunately. As a teacher, it's no longer just sufficient to, you know, take care of your kids academically, teach them in a classroom, you know, now you have to go through these lockdown drills, and it was a viable threat. It wasn't a, it wasn't a, you know, a drill or anything else, so. I just wanna extend my prayers not only to my students, but all students in all schools. And I'm sure as my fellow councilman Dan, as a teacher, fellow teacher, you know, as a teacher, every second I'm in that building, every second I'm in that classroom, I'm doing whatever I can do to keep every one of my students safe every single day. Also, on a, I'm sorry to be, to be downer here, but, on Saturday, May sixth, my dad would've celebrated his eighty-fifth birthday. He passed away on January seventeenth, and just wanted to wish him a heavenly birthday. Not a day goes by that I don't talk to him, ask him for his guidance, support, and I miss him every day. Thanks again for everyone for coming out. Thank you for everyone who came up to the podium and spoke your mind, just as, you know, as Dan, who is a lot more vocal in regards to that you are the reason why we are here to listen to and take into consideration everything that you say when you come up and talk to us. I know some people might feel as though it just falls on deaf ears, and we just sit here, and, you know, we're writing stuff down in notebooks, and we're just, oh, God, you know, I can't wait till this is over with so we could go home. I write everything down. I, I listen, and I didn't get your address, but after this meeting, I'm gonna come and get your address, because I missed it when you gave it, and I will come talk to you after the meeting, 'cause I wanna make sure I write that down, so. Again, thank you for taking the time to come and come regularly. That's, that's, that's why we have these meetings with the hopes that during the public comment section, we have citizens of our city come up and voice their opinions, their thoughts, their concerns, and I appreciate it. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilman Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be rather quick. I do wanna thank everyone that came up today. Do know that I did take a lot of notes from today's meeting, and welcome to hear any concerns. Come up to me after this meeting, come up to me. If you see me in the street, or let's meet at a coffee shop, and let's really discuss some issues and get things done. I wanted to welcome again Reverend Turner to the Chaplain Corps, and also our new DDA member, Mr. Gettner. He has big shoes to fill, and double-check. Like I said, I welcome more dialogue, conversations, and communicate, and with that, I'll, short and simple, yield tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blevins?
Good evening. First off, thank you all for coming up and speaking from a request of a dad joke, 'cause I didn't get to do one in the last meeting, but with the Kentucky Derby happening, my, uh, my friend had this horse named Mayo, and what does Mayo do? Mayonnaise. The next thing I wanna say is, I really hope I can, once again, get an update of the flagpoles in front of City Hall with lights, 'cause, again, still not lit. The, one thing, on June seventeenth and the eighteenth, Historical Commission is gonna be doing the flea market at the community center from ten AM to four PM. As always, please make sure you're supporting local. And then finally, I just wanna say, great job to our Parks and Recs Department, and what they're doing is, said repeatedly, is fifteen out of the nineteen parks have been re-updated, and for the, when I hear and see comments about how the parks aren't getting done and all that stuff, even the Parks and Recs Commission doing a great job, go to their meetings and speak for what, what you believe in, so. If I go back in time, history, back in two thousand eleven, I remember when people were mowing the grass voluntarily, and when they made the Allen Parker, it was because of helping the city out by Mrs., Mrs. Potza created that. So from what I see throughout the city, and I drive around, I walk, and I see things, yeah, that needs to get fixed and all that, but the department, and especially this year alone, has done a fantastic job so far, and, and I just wanna say thank you to what they do on a daily basis. And then finally, as always, I hope everyone has a good two weeks, and I have listened, listened to all your comments and wrote everything down, and just always stay optimistic, and again, you never know what everyone is going through in their personal lives, and but just stay positive, and with that, God bless, and I yield.
Thank you. Councilman Marcos?
Couple things I'd like to talk, Lynn, I made a comment about, you have to learn what's going on through Facebook, Facebook posts. I, you know, and I, I follow the Allen Parker, the Allen Parker two-point-oh, excuse me. And, you know, I, I never engage, because it's pretty much a losing battle. You see, finding people who are against everything always on there, and you have very few help people who wanna support something, saying things. But some of the posts, when you say what's, what you find out, is not always quite accurate. There are things that have been said, for instance, somebody said there was four houses for sale in Allen Park. Well, it doesn't take long to figure out that's wrong. There may be four houses for sale on one street, but there's over, I just went on one site, and there was over fifty houses. So that was just one point. Another point, we, I mean, listening to everybody who's, who's got an opinion, that's great. Splash pad, skate park, dog park, and it works, green space, even the, even the farmer's market. But what I'm, and, and part of this presentation that was given to us, it seems to this, the shed building seems to have been relegated just to a farmer's market. And again, I'm just, I'm speaking objectively here. If that was just a farmer's market, yeah, I'd say, no, that's kinda stupid. That's not very smart. But what if you have different shows? You have during, you have Thanksgiving parade, you have Santa come down to Santa's house, or the Easter parade, Easter comes out, and, and the Easter bunnies in there. What if you have flower and garden shows in there? There are other things. Or we can put thirty-three lofts, and I don't know how many stores, that will generate forty-four million dollars in new sales. Now, let me break that down. Forty-four million dollars. That would break down every single day of the year, would have to be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars spent every single day of the year in the downtown area, every single day. Would generate one-point-one million dollars in new taxes. That would mean if you had those thirty-three condos and how many stores or whatever, that that would mean their taxes would have to be at least twenty thousand dollars each. I don't know if that sounds feasible. Again, I'm looking at the numbers objectively. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just putting the numbers that they were posted out there for everybody to see. So, again, everybody's not gonna agree on what's gonna happen. Nobody, it never happens. We talked about this last meeting. Fifty-one, forty-nine, fifty-two, forty-eight. Whatever the case, we, we're trying to do what's best for the, for the people that put us here, and that's all we're, we're trying to do. I will rest my case on the rest of this. My thing is, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you, guys. And today is National Teacher Day, and my daughter is also a teacher, so thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. Councilman Lally?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank everybody that came up here and spoke tonight. That's, that's why this meeting is open to the public, because you guys put us in this place, and that we need to hear from you. Nobody comes here and complains that we don't know, we don't know what's going on, so. I always, I'm, I'm the guy that rides around town all the time, from daybreak to nighttime. I see a lot of stuff, and like you said, there's not too many houses that's for sale now. Look, they're going pretty quick. Pretty quick. So that's that. And thank you for coming. Now, on a personal note, I personally wanna thank the, to the Festivus Committee for allowing me to create a dedication plaque stand for Bob, Bob Stites, who served as a veteran, police officer, city council, Festivus Committee, and a loving father and husband. I pers- I personally painted the, the plaque stand, and I asked Mario Savona to permanently install it. It's at Pocket Park. You'll see it. It's standing right now. And he installed it into the ground, and he did it so that no cost. He didn't, he didn't charge nothing. So may Bob's, Bobso rest in peace. He's a good man. He deserved it. And the other thing, about talking about the theater, the committee that I'm in with the Community Relations Committee, which is I, Valerius, Blevins, and me, we collected about five hundred bricks. We cleaned them all out. We got five hundred bricks behind the Parks and Rec building or the hockey arena. And we, hopefully, that one day we get together, and we are gonna try to make a fundraiser for this, just to promote the bricks and sell them for twenty-five dollars a donation. I'm gonna call it donation. If you wanna give a thirty, that's fine, too. We really appreciate it. And this money that comes from the bricks, it's gonna go to the memorial on Pelham and El- and Champagne, and the one in, uh, Thomas Brand Park, which is gonna be called the Vietnam Memorial and Beyond. And that's where we're gonna spend the money. We need a lot of money there, so hopefully, we could sell some of them, all of them. I think Rick, one of the, uh, one of the guys in the committee, the little guy, Richard, he said he's trying to clean them, clean the brick up and put the, a number when was, when was, uh, open. It was nineteen forty it was open, so. Hopefully, we get something, and I wanna thank all the committee that worked with me, including our district, uh, district deputy, I don't know where I am in the council meeting. The city administrator that helped me a lot about it. Thank you very much, and that. Yes, I was invited to an informal meeting in our police department with Wayne County Prosecutor Kim Worthy. Her assistant, Tony Wirero, Police Chief Egan, and his detective sergeant, and our city prosecutor, Mike Early, and Miss, Miss Worthy discussed matters of concern to the public safety of our city and how the prosecutor's office could assist our police department. She described the new case management system the prosecutor has implemented so that our police officer can submit criminal warrants requests without having to leave the police station. With this new system, our officers can spend their time protecting the citizens instead of having to appear in the prosecutor's office downtown. The meeting was very informative, and prosecutor Kim Worthy showed us the, this, that she cares about each of the forty-three Wayne County commis- committees, communities, I'm sorry. I have learned that she is the only elected officer, official to visit our community in person. It was an honor for me to participate, and I thank prosecutor Worthy on behalf of our city. And I just wanna say a couple of things about what's going on here. I wanna say that this city is the best city I have seen. I've been here for about fifty years, and I, and all the people that come up here complain about the trees and all the other stuff. It's very important that you come up here and complain about those, because if you don't complain, we don't know. And our phone numbers are in the books, in the, in our office over here at the city hall. You can always call, you guys elected us up here. We gotta serve you, okay? And I wanna especially say thank you to all the mothers, Mother's Day coming up, that's the fourteenth. And the Knights of Columbus opened the doors for the breakfast at the, the hall there. That's a donation for getting in, that you have a breakfast with scrambled eggs, bacon, sausage, pancakes, and desserts, and coffee, and orange juice. So I just wanna say thank you very much for coming. God bless, and good night.
Thank you. Councilman Lloyd?
Some days, I'm thankful to go last, and this is one of them. I am deeply appreciative of this city. I, I grew up here my entire life. In January twenty-twenty, I, I met my wife, my, my now-wife, and she's a government teacher. And it was on our second or third date, and we were getting serious, and I got nervous, because I had just been sworn into office, and as a result, I, I would have to stay here. I, she lived in Royal Oak. I would not be able to move away, and I was pretty nervous about it. And I said, you know, Kate, I, you know, I, I just got elected to this office, so I, I need to live, continue to live in the city of Allen Park, you know, because of residency requirements. And I started explaining to her, and I said, "Dan, you idiot, I'm a government teacher. I understand how residency requirements were." Since then, Kate has moved to the city... Since then, Kate has moved to the city of Allen Park. We live over on Astra Avenue and we welcomed Robbie into the world, our son. And these meetings, although I know that we get contentious and I know that I said this last week, I cannot emphasize this enough, that we are all here to make this city a better place. I, 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 I think that in so many places outside of these rooms, when we get into our debates in national politics, when we get into these debates, even in state politics, people lose sight that there's different individuals that have these different aims, but they're all trying to work to make this place better. And I know that there's people in this audience that disagree with me. I happen to think, I happen to think that the plans that we have for that, the Allen Park, the area that was the Allen Park Theater is going to be a, a place for our community to come together where my son will be able to go and make friends and to dance and to be with members of his community and make these long-lasting relationships that make this an amazing place to live. And why, why it is that even though many Allen Parkers, they will graduate high school and they'll go off to college or as Clerk Mizzi will point off, will go to Chicago or to New York, they always find their way back here. Mr. Cuddell sold many of them their houses, I'm sure, all right, as they've made their way back here. So to make Mr. Marcus's point, I really, I need to say that, I mean, reasonable minds can differ on this. Reasonable minds can differ, and I am so appreciative to people that differ with me. Come up and tell me that you do. I promise you, I promise you, I will not take it personally, but I need your input. And I promise you, I promise you, I will do everything I can to represent you to the best of my ability up here. Not just me, not just what I want, because that's not what government's about. That's what not democracy is about, about representing our community. So if you disagree with me, please tell me. And you can do it up here, you can do it after the meeting, you can come, 313-268-6194. Give me a call. I'll give you that slower after the meeting. I know I talk fast. But please, please, please do. To just a couple of things real quickly, to Ms. Martin and Ms. Zalinski, thank you so much for coming. Ms. Martin, I've, I've grown to really appreciate you coming to us. It's always with good news. And I, I was out of power that day too. Had a four-month-old at home. Okay, we were out of power for three days. Anything knows anything about saving breast milk knows that that's a disaster. It's a very difficult thing. Mr. Zalinski, I really appreciate you bringing in new and different ideas. I've not familiar with the, the funding available through solar panels, but it, it sounds like a very interesting and compelling idea and I very much appreciate you coming in and bringing it to us. To Mr. Bencher, both Mr. Benchers, thank you so much for coming. My grandma built a house on Angelique in 1953, so she's been your neighbor for a very long time. My dad grew up there. And I, I can't promise you, I, I would, I need to get that address from you and we will do everything in our power to, to try to help and make this right because as Mr. Tracer pointed out, you have paid your, you've paid your taxes for a number of years here. You've been a citizen and we're very appreciative of that. So I just want to close this evening and, and let everybody know that I am appreciative of everybody in this audience, I'm appreciative of the people that are at home watching. And to the people up here, my fellow council people, Clerk Mizzi, Joe Kovir, our city attorney, to Mark and to our, all of our department heads in the back that work very hard. I know that there was some apprehension about this event over at Top Shelf Liquor, but this, the group of people that work for your city, they work extremely well together and they do so to serve you. And if you ever, ever have an issue with that, please bring that up because that's very important. Now, I do have to finish with something a bit heavy myself. In the fall of 2019, after I was elected to council, I had a post-general statement that I had to apply to the Wayne County Clerk. In that, I had an omission in my paperwork that was not completely filled out and as a result, my paperwork was not filed in time. I received a $50 fine from the Wayne County Clerk because of that. For whatever reason, I missed it. I did not see that I had a, a fee to the county clerk and I did not know about it until Clerk Mizzi went to go submit the ballots to be put on the 2023 ballot and my name was automatically rejected as a result. So my name will not appear on the 2023 ballot for city council. I will tell you, after talking with my wife and some of my colleagues, I am committing myself to running a writing campaign. I know that that will not be an easy thing to do. I, I tell everyone here that the fine has now been paid. It was taken care of in less than 24 hours, I received the notice. And I, I, I'm not going to make an excuse, but I'm going to tell you what I tell to my kids, my athletes, the people that I try to instruct and to shape every single day, that I have made a mistake. I am owning up to that and I will do everything in my power to make that right. And if that means writing a running campaign, if that means working a little bit harder this November, then I'm going to do it. So thank you again. I appreciate you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Michael.
How do you follow that? Dan, you said a lot there, but I do have to say, one of them's here today and the other was your father. If there were two people I love to watch and engage, it was Dennis Hayes and your father. Two totally different political spectrum, but two very bright minds that respected each other and smiled and waved when they seen each other, knowing we disagree so much. That's, that's always been one of my favorite things ever since I've seen that. But, yeah, whatever I was going to say before I. Just thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Michael. Want to be brief, I want to make an announcement. We had received a communication from the United Way for Southeastern Michigan for their third 21-day Equity Challenge. This challenge is the United Way's effort to grow a shared understanding of and work toward racial justice throughout our region. The key points of the challenge are to encourage everyone to take a firm stand against racism and discrimination in all of its forms by openly talking about, learning about, and confronting racism, sexism, and inequity within our communities. As a community, the city of Allen Park and its elected officials support this United Way event and encourage everyone to participate. Information about this event will be posted on our city Facebook page and website. It begins, the challenge runs for 21 weekdays from May 19th through June 16th of 2023. In reading through, I'm going to do another public service announcement. And reading through some of our department reports, I ran across something that raised a question in my mind and that was from the Deputy Fire Chief's report where I noticed a number of mulch fires. And when I asked Deputy Chief O'Reilly about that, he indicated that we have had a few commercial fires due to mulch fires spreading under the walls of businesses. He said that the fire department continues to recommend to businesses and the property owners of the hill to use non-combustible materials like stone instead of mulch. He also indicated that we get house and garage fires from grass clipping bags. As they dry out, they can spontaneously ignite. So take a little caution in where you store your clippings. I would probably highly recommend that you don't put them inside of your garage and also probably keep them away from, from any exterior walls. And I see Deputy Chief is agreeing with me on that. And I, I can recall having grass clippings in bags, not the trash bags, but in plastic and going out behind my garage and thinking, boy, these are really quite hot. So just a little precautionary note, and I, I know that they also recommend not putting mulch up next to your house. The only other thing I want to comment on that is we do get a lot of feedback. We, as noted, you know, there's feedback on Facebook, there's individuals who come to these meetings and it's very appreciative. It all gets listened to, we all take notes, do a lot of reference back and forth. But each one of us here gets feedback outside of these walls and outside of Facebook and just walking through the neighborhoods. And as we've all expressed here, there are varying opinions. And so for everyone who comes up here and comments that says, we don't like this, we don't like that, I'm sure that each and every one of us have had the exact opposite feedback from individuals we've bumped into as we're walking through the streets. So again, there's diverse opinions, nothing set in stone. You know, and there's a lot of flexibility and that's one of the things that we've found here is that you might start out taking one path and then make some discoveries that say, well, no, we need to alter our route. One of the other things that I wanted to clarify is about the farmer's market. The farmer's market is a function of the DDA and has always been a function of the DDA. So when we are commenting on that, we are commenting on the work that is being done by one of the DDA employees who has, has put a tremendous effort into making that, that particular entity grow. And even when we had the two rainy days in driving by, I was very impressed by the number of people who were going there. So again, kudos on that. I know that I was talking to Councilman Valerius before coming into the meeting and he told me about the lockdown. Very disconcerting to hear this. I hope we all this evening in our prayers pray for the mental health of everyone in this nation because we seem to be having a mental health crisis. And we are all going to suffer from that. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lally, second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at 7:42. Thank you all.